You're on the record?
Thank you. Well, good morning. Today is the fifteenth day of April. The time is nine o'clock. The board is in session, all three commissioners are here. The purpose of the meeting is for our weekly open business meeting. Identify yourself for the record over here. Bob Batista, Idaho. Bob Carnier, County Operations.
Evan David, Procurement.
Kathy Corliss, Procurement. Robin Sweeney, Procurement.
Ryan Blaine, Procurement.
Shawdink, Stress Building.
Evan Taylor, Prosecutor's Office.
Josh Brown, Operations.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
Real IT guy.
George Triple, Clerk.
Teresa Fuse, County Clerk.
Alyssa Allington, Procurement. Beth Maun, Treasurer.
Well, thank you, ma'am clerk. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not.
Okay, great. We have a little bit of unfinished business. I'd accept a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second. Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Unfinished business is the award of bid number two five zero four three Ada County Assessors' Office and ended services variable flow refrigerator replacement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The evaluation team has reviewed the five bids we received for bid two five zero four three and would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for your consideration.
If you could read the letter.
Sure. So, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement, dear members of the board, after reviewing the bids submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two five zero four three to Intelligent Design Mechanical Solutions as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of two hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred thirty-seven dollars.
Okay.
There's that letter.
Okay. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move we award bid two five zero four three to Intelligent Services RF, RF, VRF replacement in the amount of two hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
One second. Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Except we have new business proclamation designating two lights for tomorrow day. I've asked our treasurer, Ms. Beth Maun, to read that and as much as she's working on that project. Go ahead, Beth.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas Ada County recognizes the importance of commemorating the signing of the Declaration of Independence, a milestone that embodies our nation's founding ideals of equality, liberty, and justice. And whereas, on the night of April eighteen through nineteen seventeen seventy-five, Paul Revere, a member of the Sons of Liberty, undertook a perilous midnight ride to warn Samuel Adams and John Hancock of the impending British troop movements, a pivotal moment that helped ignite the American Revolution. And whereas, Revere's famous ride was preceded by the hanging of two lanterns in the Old North Church steeple, signaling two if by sea to indicate the British approach by water, a code that has become an enduring symbol of American vigilance and preparedness. And whereas, Revere's journey alerting local militia and citizens exemplifies the spirit of community and shared responsibility that has defined our nation since its inception. And whereas, our community needs to unite in remembrance of our shared history, honoring the sacrifices made by those who fought for our independence and the values we hold dear. And whereas, the county pledges its support of America Two Fifty in Idaho to commemorate the two hundred and fiftieth birthday of the United States of America and encourages participation in community events and programs that promote patriotism, unity, and reflection on our collective history. And whereas, this initiative aims to foster civic engagement and inspire acts of service that will resonate throughout our communities as we prepare for America's two hundred and fiftieth birthday in twenty twenty-six. And whereas, as part of the national initiative, two lights will be displayed at the Ada County Courthouse on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-five to honor and draw inspiration from Paul Revere's historic ride. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Ada County Commissioners does hereby proclaim April eighteenth, twenty twenty-five as two lights for tomorrow day and April nineteenth, twenty twenty-five as Day of Community Service in Ada County and encourages all residents participate the evening vigil by prominently displaying two lights in their homes on April eighteenth and to pledge their time, talent, or treasure in a service opportunity on April nineteenth that reflects the needs and values of our community.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to reiterate like I did when we had our challenge to this budget process. This is the, this is the budget year of twenty twenty-six and so just read a couple of passages from the Declaration of Independence to kind of remind us of some of the things. And this is, this is often quoted, so I'll read this part as well. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all manner created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unadmissible rights, that among these are life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness; that to preserve these rights governments are instituted by man, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." So I think that's what we have to remind ourselves, especially as government employees. Government is God-given and we get those rights from the people. And then, in the Declaration of Independence, there are twenty-eight things that they complained about, the government doing, the government of England at the time. So I think it'd be useful for us to review those. And one of them, I guess, as county employees in particular, number ten says, "He has erected a multitude of new offices and sent hither swarms of officers to harass our people and to eat out their substance." So as government employees, we need to focus on the fact that we don't want to be those kinds of people like the king. And then at the end, it says, "Appealing to the Supreme Judge of the world for the rectitude of our intentions, due in the name and by the authority of the good people of the colonies of the people, solemnly published and declare." So I think we, we need to think of ourselves in that context of, in essence, being the John Hancocks signing that Declaration of Independence because we, two hundred and fifty years later, need to remind ourselves we don't want to go back to what it was then. Just as a reminder for all of us.
Okay. Well, you've read the proclamation, appreciate it. Now we need to take the motion. Pass it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners, Ada County, State of Idaho, do declare April eighteenth as two lights for tomorrow day in Ada County.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Want some, go take a picture? Beth?
And just, just as a reminder, Beth, if she is, we're trying to have people around the state who are gathering people who are willing to dedicate themselves to that proclamation again. She's...
Our state treasurer is headed up on this state level and she's asked that to be the Ada County rep, right?
Yes.
If you need any information on what's going on in the state for the whole year of twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, Beth's the person to get the information.
Come on, Beth. Okay, moving on. We have a couple of resolutions to consider. I'll open the public hearing on resolution number three zero eight six. A resolution for sole for procurement of tremble GPS equipment for the Indian Hill landfill. Any question or discussion on this? Okay. I'll close the public hearing on resolution number three oh eight six and call for a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution number three zero eight six as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on resolution number three oh eight seven. Resolution for sole sale of personal property owned by Ada County, vehicles and miscellaneous office furniture. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move we approve resolution three zero eight seven as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have an opening of some bids. Opening of RFP two five zero three eight.
That's Mr. Chairman. We've got a lot of openings this morning, so bear with us. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Procurement received four proposals for RFP two five zero three eight to Ada County Master Facilities Plan Update twenty twenty-five. Our bonfire procurement systems up here on the screen. If you're ready for us to open the proposals, we'll proceed.
We're ready.
Okay. So Robin's gonna unseal those. And on this one, being an RFP, we'll just be reading the name of the proposers submitted on the project.
Sure.
All right. Did you want me to read them?
Sure.
Okay, so first up, we have Clearwater Financial LLC, Cushing Terrell, MGT Impact Solutions LLC, and then lastly, Wolfert.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, the evaluation team will need some time to evaluate these proposals and we request that this be tabled for final ranking and award recommendation to the May sixth, twenty twenty-five open business meeting.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to table the award of RFP two five zero three eight to May sixth, twenty twenty-five.
I second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Opening of bid number five two five zero three nine, Ada County Sheriff's Office Field Services Building Electrical Switchboard Replacement. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Ada County Procurement received two responses for bid two five zero three nine. We've got Bonfire pulled up from the screen. Do you'd like us to unseal those?
Go ahead.
So Evan's gonna do this. And on this one, we will be reading in the name of the bidder, the total bid amount, and that is going to include a base bid amount plus an owner's contingency of ten thousand plus two additive alternates that we may or may not award, so just depending on budget. All right. So, would you like me to read those?
Sure, go ahead.
All right, so first up, we have Hobson Fabricating Corp. with a total bid amount of one hundred forty thousand, six hundred nine dollars. And then second, we have Lee Electric with a total bid amount of two hundred seventy-one thousand, three hundred four dollars.
All right.
So, Mr. Chairman, the evaluation team will need a little time to review the bids and we request that this be tabled for award to April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five's open business meeting.
April twenty-second?
I'll accept the motion.
I, Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the evaluation team's recommendation on bid two five zero three nine and table it till the April
Twenty.
twenty-second. Open business meeting.
I'll second that. And you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, now open bid two five zero four four.
All right, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Procurement received seven responses for bid two five zero four four, Ada County Sheriff's Office Restroom Upgrades twenty twenty-five. Our bonfire systems up here. If you would like us to unseal the bids.
Go ahead.
All right. So on this one, we will read the name of the bidder and then the total bid amount. And this one is a base bid amount plus owner's contingency of two hundred thousand as well as one additive alternate that we may or may not award depending on the amount. All right. First up is Alpine Construction Management. And again, this whole total I'm reading is going to include the additive alternate and the owner's contingency. But that first one is one million, three hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars. Next up is Barrier Building at nine hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. E K C Inc. with a total of eight hundred thirty-six thousand, five hundred thirty-one dollars. Next is Excelsior Construction with a total bid amount of eight hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. Next is Pacific Source Construction with a total of nine hundred sixty-four thousand, six hundred seventy dollars. Next is Prusit Construction LLC with a total of nine hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. And then lastly is Triple G Construction with a total bid amount of one million, fifty-seven thousand, two hundred two dollars and forty-four cents. And, Mr. Chairman, the evaluation team will need some time to review these bids and we request that this be tabled for award to the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five open business meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'll accept the motion to table this, award of this bid to the twenty-second of April.
I'll move to table the award of bid two five zero four four, Ada County Sheriff's Office Restroom Upgrades to April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have bid number twenty-five zero forty-five, Ada County Sheriff's Office Field Service Chiller and Pump Replacement Project.
Yes. Last but not least, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Procurement received eight responses for bid two five zero four five and Ryan's got Bonfire pulled up here. If you're ready for us to unseal the bids.
Go ahead.
All right. And on this one, we will just read the name of the bidder and the total bid amount, which is the base bid plus owner's contingency of fifteen thousand. All right. Okay, so. All right, so first up is Echo Engineered Systems with a total bid amount of one hundred thirty-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars. Next is American Chiller Service with a total of one hundred forty thousand, eight hundred eighty-nine dollars. Next is American Mechanical Solutions, I believe, with a total of one hundred sixty-one thousand, sixteen dollars. Next is Cascade Enterprises Inc. with a total bid amount of one hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars. Next is Intelligent Design Mechanical with a total of one hundred fifty-three thousand, three hundred twenty-eight dollars. Next is Lacy Mechanical Inc. with a total of one hundred sixty-two thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. Next is R M Mechanical with a total of one hundred seventy-three thousand, six hundred eighty-one dollars. And then lastly is T B R Inc. with a total of one hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred dollars.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, the evaluation team will need time to review the bids and we request that this also be tabled for award to the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five open business meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table bid two five zero four five, Ada County Sheriff's Office Field Chiller and Pump Replacement to the April twenty-second business meeting.
Second that. Okay, I've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up, we have licenses, Peddler Solicitor's License. Is there any question or discussion on this application? I don't see any. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the Peddler Solicitor License as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next up, we have our distinguished clerk with us, Mr. Trent Triple.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I think it's a world record that we only have one license on the agenda today, so we're trying to do our best to cut down. No. First off, I have sitting next to me Teresa Fuse. She is the clerk of the day. She's been nominated by her peers to spend the day with me. I don't know if that's a punishment or a reward, but she gets to see what I do all day long and then let all of her folks know about what we do in the clerk's office. She's, she's gonna be a fun, fun partner today, so I appreciate that. We have personnel budget submissions due at the end of this week, so a lot of offices and departments are working furiously to get those in. And if that's not enough, we have an election coming up in a few weeks. It's a fairly full election. We're running a hundred eighty-six precincts, as this board knows, a hundred forty locations, two hundred eighty-nine ballot styles. Early voting will start the fifth of May. Absentees have already gone out the door, that those have already been requested. One addition to early voting this year is we've increased one of our sites to STAR. So STAR City Hall will be a new early voting site, which we're super excited about out in that area. On the ballot, library trustees, sewer districts, auditorium districts, and then the STAR Fire Budget Levy are the big ones. And I don't think it's a surprise to anyone, but we have a lot of competitive sewer and library district races. So it'll be an interesting election, for sure. We're gearing up for it in the midst of the construction that we're doing and this will be a heavy lift for us, but we're excited for it. That's all I have from the clerk's office. Any questions?
All right, well, good. Any questions from the board?
Just a curiosity question. What's the number of ballots, the percentage of, that you estimate? Hundred eighty-six precincts, you said?
Yeah. Are you asking for the turnout?
Yeah.
We're expecting somewhere in single-digit turnout. So anywhere from seven to ten percent. So, not a very popular election in terms of participation from voters, but a very popular election in terms of people wanting to be on a library board or a sewer district, which has not happened for us for a long time. Normally, those are uncontested races.
Which sewer district?
Eagle Sewer District.
Eagle Sewer District.
Yeah.
Okay. That's interesting. Any other questions?
If a member of the public wants to go to the elections office on election day or watch the count, is that available to them?
That's still possible. We won't have the bottom under construction yet through this election, so they can still come into the public viewing area and watch the tabulation that occurs there in the tabulation room.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Claims Journal. I'll accept the motion on the Claims Journal.
I move we approve the Claims Journal for April eleventh, twenty twenty-five and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have some personnel actions. I'll accept the motion on the personnel actions.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have our distinguished treasurer with us, Ms. Beth Maun. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. With Coroner Riffle here next to me, I wanted to share that he has graciously invited me to participate in a multi-office collaborative training on public administration. And public administration, it's one of the duties of the treasurer's office, but it's often overlooked by investments and tax collections. But it's, it's a duty where when a decedent dies in Ada County and there's no heir or personal representative, the treasurer acts as the court-appointed administrator to secure the assets, liquidate them, and wrap up the financial affairs of the decedent. And I mention that because the majority of our referrals do come from the coroner's office. They are a great partner in helping to identify any next of kin and when they can't find that person, refer them to our office. We are currently the appointed administrator for nineteen estates. We are currently the appointed administrator for nineteen estates. Um, and I just look forward to working with Coroner Riffle on, on training, on training other coroners throughout the state on this duty. So we'll be working on that together.
Cool.
Good.
And, and that's it from the Treasurer's Office.
Curiosity question, uh, is this unusually high-low? Is it about what we usually have? Nineteen, uh?
Well, funny you should ask. It's on the, uh, our stats where it's, um, seventy-three percent of, of last year. We should be at fifty, so it's ever-increasing. And we don't know why.
Because they don't have any family close by or.
Or others. Or family that don't care.
Oh.
One or two, yeah.
Alright, alright. Anything else, uh?
That's it from the Treasurer's Office.
Okay, alright, well, thank you. Thank you. Alright, we have with us our distinguished, uh, coroner, Mr. Rich Riffle.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, well, I've already mentioned the, the outlier of this particular month in the report of the, uh, P A cases. Um, other than that, I think we're right on track. Clearly, we're above, um, last year, but then that's expected. But nothing that just reaches out and slaps me in the face to say we're worried about it. Um, we still, uh, still struggling along with the absence of a pathologist, but we're managing. Uh, not quite sure how, but we're, we're, we're muddling through. Some of the challenges that I've noticed since the passing of Senate Bill eleven oh one that deals with coroners, um, in my humble opinion, while most of those, uh, uh, things that were passed are highly supported, uh, on the flip side is I don't think that the drafters of the language thought it all the way through. Um, and so I am currently, uh, it's just in my front of the lips. I'm not, I'm not gonna do anything about it just yet. But there's the, uh, what I consider to be an unfunded mandate, uh, for, uh, coroners are now required to use board-certified forensic pathologists. While that doesn't affect us, because that's what we have, uh, it does affect our neighboring counties. And so if they are not unable to find alternative pathologists, they'll be looking at us. And that will put me in a position to, um, based on numbers as of today, put me in a position where we may have to decline a bunch of cases, because we just, we just can't do it.
Did the legislature have any idea how hard it is to find forensic pathologists?
I was not invited to the party, sir, so I have no idea what they were told. Um, but that's part of the problem. They put in a mandate to have a certain type of pathologist that currently does not exist. I mean, they exist, but the, the, the hiring pool, there, there's no one there. So, you know, good luck Canyon County. Um, but, uh, while it's not, uh, technically my responsibility to find them a pathologist, that's theirs. I'm just trying to be a team player and embrace everybody for the impacts of, uh, of what could possibly happen, so. Uh, anyway. Uh, on the side of that, um, if you've had a chance to read my, uh, um, report, next year, or, uh, next year, next month, you'll see a different stat sheet. We've, um, I've assembled a team that, that went through our, our, uh, case management system and they're developing a core, um, core list of, uh, search criteria so that it doesn't matter who you call, you get the same answer. Um, so as the, anyway, um, and then we're gonna, we're gonna just kind of revamp this a little bit. Some of the stuff I don't, you know, I think we've seen enough of it, kind of mix things up a little bit for you. On the side of that, the last thing I had was I'd kind of like to get your feedback on the fact-finding tour that you guys did yesterday. Thank you for coming and spending your valuable time. Staff had a great time working with you. Uh, they, they all said, you know, we could have used another hour or two as well, you know, yeah, but they don't have that, so, uh, deal with it. But I want to get your input. You guys have any additional questions? What did you think of it? Was it worthwhile? All that kind of stuff. Something I can take back to the troops and say to tell them what, what you guys thought.
Any comments, Mr. Chair? Go ahead.
Yeah, um, appreciate that and, uh, you know, we did, we did get the, the full tour and I'm, I'm sure if any other, uh, elected officials wanted to, to see that tour as well. They'll show you in, uh, up close and in, in, dare I say, graphic detail. So, uh, to me, it really kind of put in, into perspective the, you know, the work that you guys do and I guess how important it is and how much I would not want to do that job. So it's, I can see why it's hard to, uh, um, find forensic pathologists, because that's gotta be a, a tough line of work to want to, you know, base your career around. And even beneath them, the techs and the interns and all that, uh, um, again, that's, there's, it's, it was not something that I could ever see myself. I'm not inclined medically that way. And so I think we gotta appreciate your staff who's willing to do that job. And, um, I think, I think death investigators probably don't get the same societal, you know, cachet as police and firemen, but I think they should based on all the work that they do. Um, I mean, in today's day and age where everyone's got fire sprinklers, I, they, they might even be more important than firemen, because there's not, never that many fires to put out, but there's deceivants every single day that, that, that need to be, um, um, processed humanely and, and, uh, through a, a system that, that can ensure, you know, justice and, and dignity for, for, um, our residents. And, I mean, we hear all the stories about all the other counties that don't have forensic pathologists and maybe don't even have a, a pathologist for a coroner in these small counties that, uh, it's been in the paper that, um, they're not doing the amount of autopsies they should, because they just don't have the capability. And so that could lead to potentially unsolved murders or unsolved crimes. We hope it doesn't, but that's, um, I think that's where, you know, we've come in to be the, kind of the, the capital city, the capital county to take on those cases from thirty-four other counties. Um, that's us being a good neighbor, so, um, appreciate the tour and, uh, i- i- if you, if you do want to take the tour, I'd, I'd say don't, uh, have a big meal before, huh, because, uh, um, it, it definitely puts things in perspective. I'll say that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I, I'm gonna schedule, uh, the Commissioners to come out and meet with you before they have meetings with me, because yesterday they were very docile and grounded. It was a great preparation for the meeting we had yesterday.
Well, we're always docile when we talk about the budget.
Mr. Chairman and, and, uh, Court, uh, Trent, or Triple. Uh, the, uh, the, the, um, he was very instructive, uh, as Commissioner Davis said, uh, here, here to what Commissioner Davis had said. Uh, appreciate it, and it's one of those, uh, things that you don't think about, but once you think about it, I'm glad I didn't choose that as a career, because I, I, I'm with him. I would not have chosen that as a career, but it is an essential part of our community. Like a lot of other things we have in our community that people do unsung, uh, unnoticed, but essential part of our community. So convey that to them, that we appreciate what they do, how they do it, and, uh, not only for Ada County, but for the entire state.
You're very welcome, on your behalf. Well, it was, I, it was an eye-opening experience, I have no question about it. I've, I've toured, I've brought several Commissioners from other, other counties out to look at it, but we just looked at the facilities. But, uh, our tour yesterday was, uh, in watching you work with there was, they've got a big exam room with six tables in, and they had four bodies on them, and they were working on those bodies when we were watching them. And that was, uh, that was something else I wanted to improve that. And, uh, and then, of course, the, the, the investigators, uh, of course, we've, we've known about the investigator. We'd never have actually seen what they do, and we saw pretty graphic pictures. And I'm surprised that the, uh, other first responders won't even touch it. They won't step in a room and they won't, because it's too gross. I'm going, wait a minute, they're first responders, they ought to help out a little bit, but they won't. The firemen and, uh, other police, they just won't help them. To the point is, there was, there were one of the pictures they showed us where there was a, a, it wasn't an accident. Some fellow decided he wanted to, uh, drive his motorcycle to do a semi-truck. Oh, yeah. Yeah. And of course, there wasn't much left of him, but they, the, the firemen wouldn't even help him hose off the street. They had to get a, I, I was surprised. Very common. They had to get somebody else to come out after they cleaned everything up, that he, somebody else to come out and hose off the street. It, it surprised me. And, and then, of course, I, I typically try to learn something, and I did, did. I did not know that if there's anybody that is, uh, any family that wants to, uh, use a cremation services, they have to get the coroner's permission. It's, you have to get a permit from the coroner's office to do a, a cremation. I didn't know that. There's like, what'd you say, three hundred and twenty-five, three hundred and twenty?
About per month.
Per month. I didn't, I did not know that, so we learned something on there. So, so thank you. I appreciate the tour. We had, we got a, an excellent staff to see it. Thank you. I was, I was, uh, impressed with your staff and, uh, I for one, learned a lot. Well, good, yeah. That's, uh.
And if I may.
Yes.
How did you feel?
Oh, Alma was our.
You had some of our staff kind of concerned.
She, she cleared for us.
Yeah, you had some of our staff kind of concerned, you're kind of turning green a little bit, so.
Alma did just fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Or anything else?
Oh, you're.
Thank you, again, thank you, Alma, for coming out. That was, uh, well worth the efforts that we put into it, so appreciate it greatly.
Yeah. Alright, well, moving along, uh, we have approval of the minutes.
I move we approve the minutes of the April eighth meeting and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Okay, um, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, now we have a couple of, uh, commercial exhibits for the Western Idaho Fair, forty-seven.
And counting, there's more coming.
Well, good.
Yep, it's that time of year, sir.
Oh, yeah. Any questions or discussion on any of the, uh, commercial exhibits for the fair? Uh, hearing none, I'll accept the motion. There's forty-seven.
I'll move to approve the, uh, forty-seven agreements as identified on the agenda for Expo Idaho, Western Idaho Fair. And authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, uh, you've heard the motion. Any new ones? Any new ones? These are all repeats.
Um, you know, I can't answer that honestly, sir.
That's alright.
There's probably a mixture of both.
Alright.
Yep.
Well, good. Well, you've heard the motion. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have, uh, Barbara Park and Education Events Center. We have two events, uh, authorized there. Any questions or discussion on any of the, uh, events, any of the two events? Alright, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the Parks and Waterway events as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have nine agreements. Uh, I reviewed these agreements. Uh, they're ver- they, they various. Uh, any question or discussion on any of these agreements?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Couple for Western Idaho Fair, and Bob's here. Did, Bob, did you want to talk about, uh, getting the swap for Ada County Highway District Stormwater Facility?
I'm gonna refer to Josh to help me with that.
I was gonna say, Josh.
Charlie, uh, if you want some more information on that, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, as you know, part of the design of the base one of the park at Expo Idaho includes a, a new state-of-the-art stormwater treatment facility. Um, with that treatment facility, um, our legal staff has been working with the legal staff in Ada County Highway District to do a land swap where we will vacate, um, the existing stormwater facility that's on site uh, in exchange for the new facility that we're building. Uh, these documents that are on the, um, agenda today are the license agreement where they'll have the right to get onto that property, to do all the service, uh, and to maintain, uh, the new stormwater treatment facility.
Okay, any other questions about any of these contracts? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the agreements as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Any further business needs to be brought before the board for this meeting? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you. We're on record. Okay, well, good, good morning. Today is the fifteenth day of April. The time is nine forty-five. The Board is in session, acting as the Board of County Emergency Medical Services District for its weekly Open Business Meeting. All three Commissioners are present. We have, what's that?
He's there.
He's up on the Board. Hey, Sean, are you there, Sean?
Yes, sir. I'm here.
There you are. All right. Well, before we get into the, oh, we have IT guy here, all three Commissioners are present, but before we get into the, to the meeting, we need to have a motion to change our daily agenda. We need to delay the nine, the legal staff executive session and the space planning committee. So I'll accept the motion to delay those to another date.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to amend the agenda to remove the legal staff executive session meeting scheduled for nine-thirty, because there are no legal items, and to remove the space planning committee recommendation meeting scheduled for eleven-thirty, which will be tabled to another time.
Okay.
We're just removing it from the agenda, not table it.
We're just removing, removing it from the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. The motion is to remove legal staff executive session from our daily agenda and the space planning committee from our daily agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Motion carries. Okay. We, are there any changes to the agenda for the Emergency Medical Services District?
There are none.
No changes, okay. First item up is the Claims Journal. I'll accept the motion on the Claims Journal.
I move to approve the EMS Claims Journal for April eleventh, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have personnel actions. I'll accept the motion on the personnel actions.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have the approval of the minutes for the Emergency Medical District for four-one-twenty-five. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the Emergency Medical Services District minutes for four-one-twenty-twenty-five.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have our favorite part of the agenda, our AMS update with our one and only Sean. Sean, go ahead.
Yes.
You got an hour.
Chair, Commissioner. What's that?
You've got an hour.
An hour? I don't have an hour's worth of your time.
Okay. We'll take up the rest, whatever you need.
Quick update on D E M P, a meeting with the consultant. And they've been meeting with Medicaid, and it sounds like we're gonna be able to submit a cop report here very soon. So, once we know that happens, and the, coming back to the Board to open the budget, to infuse that money into the budget. Outside of that, I understand, heard that I am retiring in October.
Have you changed your mind?
I have not. I have not changed my mind.
Okay.
So that's still my plan.
Oh. All right.
That's really all I had for today.
That's all you have. Okay. Has it benefited the system to be able to use Eckert Bridge?
Yes, it has. That has been wonderful, being able to have that bridge open again. It certainly reduces response times, and depending on where the call is, it just makes it easier to get there, so we're glad to see it.
We're glad to see that, the cooperation with the Highway District and the I T D to get that bridge replaced. It is still under, under planning to actually replace that old bridge. Hopefully, it'll happen soon.
Yeah.
All right. So, anything else you got for us? Any trainings going on? You taking applications?
We've always got, we've always got trainings going on, blockchain going on right now. That supervisor meeting happening right now. There's always a lot of stuff going on.
All right, well, great. All right. Anything else for us?
No, sir.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Without any, anything else, the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Take your staff, we appreciate your work.
Will do.
Thank you.